February 7th, City Council Meeting, Bristol, Tennessee City Council to order. And Terry, if you'll take the role.
Councilwoman Dolan. Councilwoman Fire Robin. Here. Vice Mayor State.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilman Zander. Here.
Thank you, Terry. I'll give you a couple of little housekeeping things before we get started. Make sure your cellphones off, if you've got those in your pocket or purse. We're going to have an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak to your city council in your city council meeting tonight. If it's on the agenda, make sure that you speak to it when it comes up on the agenda. And if it's something that's not on the agenda, if you would, there's going to be Appearance of Citizens. We'll call for that here in just a little while. And any time that you speak, if you'll come to the microphone and give your name and where you live, so that we can get that into record, and Terry can make sure that's into record there. We appreciate you doing that. We've got several special guests here. We've got a host of ex-council and mayors in the house. Dr. John Gaines, former mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, is with us this evening, as is former Mayor Kelly Graham. Where is he? Oh, there he is, back there in the back. We've got Councilman Bill Bingham is with us. I saw Bill come in, and there he is, all the way to the back. Glad to have you with us. And always, we've got Dr. Gary Lilly with us this evening to represent our school system. Giving the invocation tonight, we have Pastor William J. Reed from New Hope Baptist Church. Pastor Reed has been ministering to his flock for the last 20 years over there. We appreciate him coming and giving our invocation. And this evening, we have a young man by the name of Bennett Baines, who is, I believe, the youngest person to ever give the Pledge of Allegiance at our council meeting. He's representing the first grade at St. Anne's School. He's here with his parents, Mike and Charo Baines, as well as his grandmother Harrison, and his brother Bowen and his sister Castle. So folks, if you would join with me, Pastor Reed, if you'll give the invocation, and we'll follow it up. Would you please stand?
Will you bow your heads? Eternal God, we are so grateful for this time together, as we come together to commit ourselves to making this community an even better place to live. We thank you for your graces, your mercies you have shown toward us, as our forefathers has labored and committed themselves to this area. We pray now your richest blessings upon this council, this gathering, as they come together. Father, we pray that they will touch and commune one with another, as it be our continuance to strive to make Bristol a beautiful place to live. We love you, we thank you for this time together. Bless the efforts of this evening, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Pastor Reed, thank you very much. And Bennett, thank you for leaving our pledge. I want to tell the folks in attendance this evening a little story about Bennett. Interesting, a week or so ago, Mrs. Bracker's class there at St. Anne's, the first grade class, had a day where the kids were going to come in the next day, and they were to come as their future self. So I'm sure they had lots of firemen and police officers and astronauts, and who knows what the kids came dressed as. Mr. Bennett Baines came as the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee.[255.23][255.23](Laughter). So, Mr. Bennett, I hope to see you up here behind this desk here, and maybe we'll give you about 25 years or so, and then want to see you up here in this seat, all right? Thank you for coming.[267.77][267.77](Applause). Makes you wonder why anybody would want that job, but, thank you. All right, folks, Mr. Broton, is there any changes in the agenda this evening that we need to deal with?
No, Mr. Mayor. The agenda as distributed is ready for action with no additional items.
All right, thank you so much. First thing up on our agenda this evening is Proclamations and Recognizations. And Councilwoman Margaret Fire Robin is going to read a very special proclamation recognizing Elsie King Manufacturing Company.
First, I'll ask Mr. Jack King if you'd come to the microphone over there, and when I'm done, Mayor Shoemaker will present it, and then you have a minute to say a word or two, if you'd like. Whereas, the Elsie King Manufacturing Company was founded in 1913 by Landon Clayton King, and is beginning its 100th year in operation. And whereas, the company operated on Moore Street in Bristol, Virginia, before moving to the current location at the corner of Shelby and 7th Street in Bristol, Tennessee in 1916. And whereas, the company has been owned and operated continuously by the descendants of Elsie King, and has been operated by the King family for four generations, including the current CEO, Jack King, at the current location on 7th Street. And whereas, the company logo, Pointer Brand, is a picture of Elsie King's champion pointer dog, King's Carolina Bill, and is an internationally recognized label of quality clothing that is proudly made in America. And whereas, the Elsie King Manufacturing Company has provided jobs for the citizens of Bristol and the surrounding area continuously throughout this period, surviving two floods, one fire, while maintaining operation. And whereas, the Elsie King Manufacturing Company has expressed its dedication and confidence in Bristol and in our citizens by expanding its operations and facility twice, and is currently expanding its product line to better serve its customers. And whereas, the Elsie King Manufacturing Company is considered a recognized and essential part of the history and culture of the city of Bristol, and a symbol of the American entrepreneur spirit. Now, therefore, David Shoemaker, mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby congratulate the Elsie King Manufacturing Company, Pointer Brand, as it enters the 100th year of operation in Bristol, and on behalf of the entire community extends best wishes for continued business success now and in the future, done this 7th day of February 2012.[442.52][442.52](Applause).
I'll add, while they're shaking hands, that the council did discuss very seriously wearing Pointer Brand overalls.
Thank you.
I think we chickened out.
That's quite all right, but I will let everyone know that we are open Monday through Friday, from 7:30 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, and I welcome everyone to come in and buy those Pointer Brand overalls, jeans, and jackets that are made in downtown Bristol for over 100 years. I just want to let everybody else know that we have a brand-new product line we're coming out with, that this coming Monday, I'll be showing it in Las Vegas. The press is all excited about it. We have 50 new styles. So, we're pretty excited. But I am the fourth generation to run this factory, pretty excited about that. We are actually going strong. I'm just really proud. I was thinking about what I wanted to say, and there's really four things. Faith in God, making a quality product, respecting your customer, and loving your employee. Those four things have made us who we are and what we are today, and as well as, we are America's oldest, are you all hearing me? The oldest family-owned textile mill in America, and that's located at the corner of 7th and Shelby, and I invite everybody to come by and see me. Come by and say hello. If you see me on the street, say hello, I'll invite you in. Y'all take a tour, we'll show you what we're making, what we're sewing that day. Now, we don't give tours on Thursday, because we're closed for maintenance on Thursday, but I welcome everybody to come on by, take a tour. You don't have to buy anything, but if you want to, you can.[545.04][545.04](Laughter). There's no pressure to buy anything, just come on in and take a tour, and see your fellow neighbor actually making something here in America. When you buy one piece of Pointer Brand, 8,000 Americans get to go to work that day. I want to say thank you to the city, and thank you for everybody who's ever bought or wore a pair of overalls. Thank you so much.[561.91][561.91](Applause).
Next up, we've got one presentation for BTHRA, Bristol, Tennessee Housing, excuse me, I'm sorry, Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And we've got Stephen Seifers here this evening to give us that presentation.
Okay, good evening, and I'm Steve Seifers. For those of you that don't know me, I am Executive Director of your Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening to come and tell you about an exciting, very exciting, new program that we're doing. I have with me Ms. Regina Edwards, who's my Finance and Special Programs Manager, and a former tenant, who is now a homeowner, Christina Harmon and her two sons. So I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening. I'm Regina Edwards. I am the Finance and Special Programs Manager for the Housing Authority, and I just want to thank you for inviting us here this evening to let us speak to you about the homeownership program. We're excited to have this program available for our families in Bristol, and we'll just take a minute to explain the program to you, and to introduce you to our first family, Christina. As you may know, the Housing Authority has two separate programs. We have our public housing apartments, where the Housing Authority's the landlord, and we have 354 apartments located in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, that low-income families live in, and their rent subsidized by HUD in those apartments. And then the other program is the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. That program assists 200 families in the Bristol, Tennessee, and Sullivan County area, very low-income families, even lower incomes than public housing, and those rents are paid to landlords in the private market. We help the family, they pay a portion of their income toward the rent, we make up the difference to the landlord. And the Section 8 Home Ownership Program is a component of that Section 8 voucher program. HUD has encouraged housing authorities for several years to get involved in this program because of the benefits, and the basic premise is that the normal rent that would be paid to the landlord can now go to a mortgage company to help that family to pay that mortgage. And it's open to both working families and disabled families. The minimum requirements are, for a working family, they have to work a minimum of 30 hours per week, and have a minimum annual income of $14,500. The disabled families, they're exempt from that 30-hour work requirement, and their annual income is the normal SSI payment, which is around $700 a month times 12 to make up their annual income. Whether they're working or disabled, they can't have owned a home in the last three years, and they can't have any indebtedness to the Housing Authority or to HUD, and they have to be in good standing with the Housing Authority and their current landlord. And if they've been on this program previously, they can't have defaulted on a loan, or they're not eligible. The families are required to complete pre-purchase counseling and post-purchase counseling, and we've chosen to work with Eastern Eight Community Development in Johnson City to provide that counseling to the families at a very low cost to the Housing Authority. Eastern Eight will have employees that will come to the Housing Authority a couple of times a year, and meet with families that are eligible to explain the program to them, and to see if they are interested and want to continue on. And those that do want to continue on and think that it is a program for them, they will work with those families to clear up any credit issues that they may have that might prohibit them from getting a loan in the private market. Eastern Eight also has several funding sources that they work with, that they can provide, can help the families to get extra grants and monies to go toward their down payments, and in some cases, they even build homes for families and can provide them with a zero-interest loan. The families have to provide at least $500 from their own funds for this program as part of their down payment. And the way that the families are assisted, they, if they're a working family, they are assisted for at least the first, or up to 15 years of their mortgage, depending on the length of the mortgage, and then disabled families can be assisted the entire 30-year mortgage, if that's how long the mortgage is. HUD considers this a kind of a win-win situation for everybody, and that's why they've encouraged housing authorities to do this. If you have, it gives those low-income families the opportunity to own their own home, and if they have a fixed-rate mortgage for 15 or 30 years, then that means there's no increase in that annual rental, they don't have the annual rental increase that you would see in the private market. So that number's frozen for those 15 to 30 years. And so the taxpayers' burden is less. So that's good for all of us to hear. And the homeowner isn't likely to come back to the Housing Authority to need rental assistance in the future. So you're taking people off of those roles that, and moving those on to someone else. And on November 22nd of this year, we had our first closing. We went to the attorney's office with our new homeowner, Christina Harmon. She's a single mom with two sons, and she chose to work with Rick Meadows and Randy Rose at Bank of Tennessee, and they worked tirelessly to help her make this happen, and got her a loan that she could do. And so she's here also to tell you about the program and what it's like to her and her family.
Hello. My name is Christina Harmon, and I'm the first person to be on the homeownership program. I would like to let you know a little bit about myself. Eight years ago, I was in a car accident, and I was pronounced dead four times. I developed all kinds of injuries. The doctors told me that I would never walk again, and I didn't. Excuse me. I didn't listen to the doctors. I refused to accept what the doctors had told me. It's been a long, hard road, but with God's help, I've been in therapy, to rehabilitate myself with physical therapy, to learn how to walk again. When you find yourself in a situation like this, it is really hard to accept it. It was hard to accept that, being a 23-year-old mother with two boys and being disabled. I was on Section 8 renting a home when this happened. The Bristol, Tennessee Housing Authority went above and beyond to help my family with everything while I was in the hospital for months. They, I can remember the first time having a conversation about this program becoming available, and I was very interested. It means the world to me and my boys that the program became available when it did. The owner of the house I was in got very sick and was going, I was going to have to move. And I prayed, and I gave it to God, and he opened so many doors, they just left me speechless. I know that everyone involved worked so very hard. And if it wasn't for Steve, Regina, Sylvia, and Ron, which are not here tonight, none of this would have been possible. I just want to thank everybody involved in creating this program. To know that you're disabled is one thing, and trying to live with it is hard enough, as it is, but to know that there is a program out there for people like me, it's amazing, and it makes you feel like there's hope out there. The world is good, and I am blessed to be the first one on this program, and I just want to thank everyone.[1066.21][1066.21](Applause).
Thank you, Christina. That's awfully inspiring. Thank you so much. We've got one public hearing this evening. Mr. Broton, if you'll tell us about that.
I'd be happy to. The public hearing tonight is, involves rezoning a property in the Fairmount neighborhood. We identified as the Fairmount North, Neighborhood North rezoning. What is before the city council this evening is to rezone approximately 170 acres in the Fairmount neighborhood from the current R3 district, which is our multifamily residential district, to the RE district, which is a newly created, two years ago newly-created, established residential district. This rezoning is consistent with the findings that came from the Fairmount Neighborhood planning process that the council is very familiar with, that took place last year. The, next slide, please. The, this rezoning has had a couple of trips to the Planning Commission, if my memory serves correctly, and at first reading, the map that is on the screen before you is what city council approved as recommended by the Planning Commission at that time. The yellow area designates the area that is currently R3, that is proposed to the RE district. The orange is highlighted simply to help city council and others understand areas that are sort of inset into the yellow, which is the area proposed for rezoning, that is not recommended by the Planning Commission to change, and just to orient everybody. Right in the center of the orange is the Fairmount Elementary School property, with north being to the top of the screen. The Planning Commission, though, as a result of conversation city council had at first reading at the last meeting, was asked to look again at their rezoning recommendation. Next slide, Sherri. And the Planning Commission has altered its recommendation to city council, and the ordinance as presented in your packet is in the amended form. And the only change that came about as a result of this second look by the Planning Commission was to leave one parcel with a street address of 503 Georgia Avenue, and you can see it there at the top, right, within the yellow boundary. That area is, has been, and is recommended to you now, it's time of second reading, to leave unchanged at its current R3 zoning. That property includes a dwelling that was built specifically as an apartment dwelling. Next slide, please, Sherri. The RE district, as I mentioned, was created a couple of years ago, and it was, its purpose was to be used in established residential neighborhoods with development standards and design that is consistent with the existing pattern and character of the original neighborhood, as it was originally developed and developed over time. Again, its purpose is to protect and maintain the integrity of an area that principally, in this case, was developed as, for single-family structures. And by limiting, going forward in the future, as properties turn and sites are redeveloped, limits those areas to a single-family and duplex dwellings going forward in time. The current R3, as the council knows, is our multifamily residential district, and that district allows up to 13 units per acre. And so that really is the genesis for the rezoning action before you. The likelihood of having additional multifamily structures put into historically a single-family neighborhood, or allowing for structures to be carved up into multiple dwelling units is seen as deleterious to the success and the future viability of the Fairmount Neighborhood North. The, at this time, Mr. Mayor, I would be, it would be appropriate to seek public comment regarding the proposed rezoning of the area described. I will maybe add one other thing, and it's a little confusing, and it's even confusing to staff in explaining it. The, any property that becomes non-conforming with a change of, with an approved rezoning, any property that is, becomes non-conforming because of the number of dwelling units on that lot, will remain unchanged by any action resulting from this rezoning. Those structures, be it a three, a unit, three units on a lot, be it seven units on a lot, be whatever it is, they will allow to remain in that configuration forever. The only time when that situation could change would be in the event that the structure was damaged through, was damaged to more than 40% of its value. In that situation, if the structure was not occupy, was not an owner-occupied structure, the rebuilding of a structure would be restricted to the RE district requirements, which would be not more than two units. Again, if it's an owner-occupied structure, and it's burnt 100% to the ground, it can be returned to three, five, seven units. It's only to those structures that are not owner-occupied. A little confusing, and as the council discusses this going further, I'll, we'll try to make sure it's very clear as to the implications of that going forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to seek public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Broton. I'm going to open up the public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone who wishes to speak to council on this particular matter, if you'll please come to the podium and introduce yourself, and we'll hear what you've got to say this evening.
Hello, my name's Marla Pierce. I reside at 205 Steel Creek Road, Bristol, Tennessee. Lord, give me the strength and the knowledge to get my point across to all these good people. First, let's put aside of how this action of rezoning the North Fairmount District area has a personal effect on me. Therefore, let's talk about our rights of owning property. I understand about the codes, but when it comes to telling property owners what we can or cannot do with our own property, is this not a communist act? What's next? I thought and believe that I live in a free country. Whereas, as abiding by the laws, rules, and regulations, if you will, I have a right to maintain private property as fitting accordingly, and while complying with the codes and zoning when purchasing these properties. If I had known the zoning could be changed on my properties, therefore, income from that property would drastically change in the negative, or to the negative, I would not have changed, I would not have mortgaged them at the price agreed upon when buying them. I know it's no skin off your nose now if you own single dwellings, but if you own multi-dwellings and owe mortgages on them, you surely can see where this action will affect you in a very negative manner. You might consider the future as a taxpayer, that rezoning could and most probably will affect you in the future in a negative way. Let me explain. I own several properties in the North Fairmount District. I cleaned them up, took out the drug dealers, troublemakers, alcoholics, et cetera, and have a very nice respectable but limited financial tenants. They are very happy with their homes and where they live. You all do have letters that confirm, confirm that matter. They have marked down how they rate my properties and how they like to live there. Let's start with 301 Linwood Street. I have six units in that building, whereas I have a mortgage based on the rent from those six units. Now, if I have over 40% damage to that building, I can only have two units back. Who's going to choose which four families will add to the homeless in Bristol? Because I can't build their homes back. I'm not allowed to. I don't want to choose which four families those would be. I care for them all. If 40% damage is done, I won't make the rents back to pay the mortgage, I lose my business. The bank will have to foreclose, there goes yet another piece of the economy to the negative, and someone's taxes are going to have to be raised because of lack of taxes that are not being paid on said property. Now, you know that the revenue will have to be made up through you. I refuse to lay it not worrying whether in the morning I have lost my business. Let us keep our properties, maybe come up with some ordinance that you have to have them looking in a certain way, or whatever. I know I have a grandfather clause now, but if, God forbid, something, or something damages my property, 40% or more, my tenants lose, I lose, the bank loses, a little more, the economy loses, and my friends, probably so do you. Also, throughout this, I just known, have known of this rezoning act about a week and a half. So I've went door to door, I've went to about 50 doors, I've got 40 signed petitions to keep it R3 instead of RE. 90% of the people I confronted with the petition and on the phone had no knowledge of this action you are wanting to pass. Isn't rental property a small business, too? Will council government overreach? Who is to put the value on any of my properties? Could we... Could we not vote tonight and reschedule to give an opportunity to let the people of this district know about the rezoning? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pierce. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to council on this particular matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. The next item on our agenda this evening is appearance of citizens. This is an opportunity for anyone attending this evening who wants to speak to council and address an issue that is not on the agenda. Now's the time for you to come to the podium and do so. If you'll introduce yourself and tell us where you live, so that we can get it into record. And keep in mind that city council members probably will not enter into a dialogue with you on an issue, but staff will be directed to pursue this, to follow up, and then report back to us. So anything you address to council this evening, we'll listen, and we promise to follow up, but we typically don't get into a dialogue with you.
Mr. Mayor, and council, it's been seven years since I've come to one of your meetings. I think after 16 years of coming to virtually every one, I can be excused for that, but I've been watching you on TV, and I think you're doing a good job, and I appreciate it. And the main thing I came to mention tonight is the appreciation of the East Hill Cemetery for your longtime support of our efforts. We have done the best we can to make it look good and to have it as a historic preservation project, and to actively pursue the job of burying those who have plots in our cemetery that we have obligation to serve, even though we don't own it, you don't own it, the best I can tell, nobody wants to own it. But it's our mission to take care of it. We're caretakers. We make, our goal is certainly not to make money, and we've been spending more than we take in by donations, and most of the people who are buried there were buried there so long ago that their descendants either have passed away or have moved to distant places. There, you know, when you think the majority of the graves and plots were bought before 1940, when the other, when the other big cemeteries, the more modern cemeteries were developed. And some of the people who we had in our cemetery, their family thought it was such a trashy-looking place, they moved the bodies to the new cemeteries. But we've tried to bring it back to a position where the city can be proud of its historic situation. And of course, the person who's been our unpaid publicist has been Bud Phillips. And Bud hasn't been on the board as long as I have, but Bud is the one that keeps it before the public. And he's got a new little book out, and he told me he'd give me some to bring, and he forgot it. He's not very well right now. He's probably sicker than I am. But he did ask me to tell you that he's going to give each member of both city councils a copy of his new little book, which called, is called "A History of East Hill Cemetery." And it is a good read. It's printed kind of small, and it wanders around a little bit from the topic, but I think you'll be pleased to know you've been helping a worthwhile enterprise, and this helps you know what the enterprise is. We've been working towards tourism. We've been working towards historic issues. We've worked at, and the Sons of the Confederacy have done a huge job to improve the big cemetery that was developed during the Civil War. People who died in Bristol, most of them hadn't fought here, they were from units all over the South. And the railroad, you probably remember that the railroad that goes through Bristol was the only connection for the armies from both sides to get from the South, where a lot of battles were taking place, to the North, where a lot more battles were taking place. So the control of the railroad through Bristol was a key goal for both the Union and the Confederate armies. And the bridge burners, and the dynamiters, and the various other groups that tried to, and they rolled up the tracks, they did all kinds of things to interrupt that traffic. But we can be, we can be proud of the fact that our city, very early, with a group of ladies, they were, had dedicated themselves to maintaining the cemetery for both Union and Confederates. And over the years, they moved away or died out, and it was left as an orphan. The local fraternal organizations volunteered to take care of it for a few years. But they got kind of tired of the burden. It's a lot of work, it is expensive, and they weren't making much money anymore because you wouldn't let them gamble, and there were other places to drink. So they gave it up. So now it has fallen to a group of citizens who don't own it and don't want to own it, but want to operate it with integrity and to have it available for these multi-purpose recognizing the history of Bristol, recognizing the people who have built our community and made it what it is, this place we're all proud of. It's also, and I look at it from a little different perspective than any other member on our board, but I think of it as one of the few things that our two cities do together. You know, if you think about it, the library, and the cemetery, and the sewer system are really the only three things we work together on. And I'm proud to have played a small part in bringing the cemetery to where it is now. It's kind of at a crossroads, there are great quarrels over what should be done next and what, who should do it. But I've enjoyed my many years since 1999, when my wife died, that I've been interested in the cemetery because she's buried there. And she was interested in the cemetery for an interesting reason, I think. She came from Connecticut, was known for its gorgeous trees in the fall. And every time we went near that cemetery, particularly in the fall, she'd see that wonderful sugar maple with a bright orange on top of the hill. It's still there, and it takes some work to keep it alive. But we have a treasure up there on that hill, and I thank the city council for supporting our effort to be on the National Register. I thank the city council for its financial support, which is the same as it was many years ago. I wish you could raise it a little bit, but as you know, we have an endowment which is very small, and at the rate we're going, it's only going to last about four more years. And unless the economy really turns around dramatically, we'll be out of money and out of luck. But thank you for your support over the years. Being on the National Register does give us opportunities for grants, federal, state, and local. And I'm just delighted with this fact, and I hope that we can get our act together and start up, First Tennessee Development District is, should be given a lot of credit for getting this through. And the Bristol Historical Association should be given a lot of credit for it. Things like that don't happen by accident. It took us years to do it, and with a number of false starts, it just blinded the alleys. But now we're on that National Register, and that is significant. We're also on the Tennessee Trails, we're also on the Civil War Trails for both states. And this, again, brings some tourism. Almost every day, people wander in looking for a relative's grave. They aren't always happy that it isn't polished, but you know, if they don't donate, they didn't, we didn't have the idea of a perpetual care contract in those days. And so we send out a letter every year and ask for help, and each year, a few people give us a significant amount, but most of the donations are very small, and the number of donations, it gets smaller every year. But I want to thank you for your part in getting us where we are, and I would hope that you'll be willing to continue in the effort as we make some of these grant applications. Because we are now in the driver's seat, the state, the national government, and I would hope our two cities would like to participate in the application process. And thanks again for your help.
Thank you, Dr. Gaines, and on behalf of my great-grandparents and my great-great-parents' grandparents who rest comfortably up there.
Yeah. Well, we want them to be comfortable and in a beautiful place that we're all considered to some extent, and maybe, maybe overstating it, but to some extent, I think cemeteries are sacred ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will see if I can make it out.
Hi, my name is Angie Braden, and I reside at 202 East State Street. And may I just say for the record, sir, that I enjoy the cemetery every day. I walk my dogs there, which is why I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen. I am very concerned about the speeders here on State Street. Pretty much from the time that they come down the hill near the light there at Georgia until they go down the hill to Sweet Treats, I cross that area of the road every day, and I have an elderly dog who does not move quite as fast as he used to. And I can just tell you from experience that the traffic out there over the last couple of years has increased, and they drive fast, much, much faster than the posted 25 miles per hour. I know personally, the other night, I was crossing the street, and a car crested, and I heard it coming, and it crested over the hill, and it had to be doing at least 45 because it crested the hill and was literally on top of us. And myself and my elderly dog, who I shoved out of the road, and my other dog, literally had to dive over in the grass because they were speeding so much down through there. This is an everyday occurrence. I know that personally, when I pull out of my driveway, I worry every day now that I'm going to be rear-ended as someone crests over that hill. And my concern also is for, you know, two of our most vulnerable citizens, and that being children, because please be mindful that in the, much of the stretch of area that I'm talking about, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street. So you have children with, walking down that area and crossing that road to get over to the basketball court. And again, these cars are speeding, and there's really nowhere to go, there's just kind of a grassy area there, and just nowhere to get away from a car if it were to happen to be over towards the edge. So you have children walking through there every day, going to the basketball court. And then, of course, you have our senior center here, so you have many senior citizens pulling out into that same traffic that is, again, driving far and away greater than the 25 mile an hour speed limit. A couple of years ago, I did speak to Captain Austin, who I understand is Major Austin now. He was helpful, he was sympathetic. I believe that he went to the city manager and spoke to him on it, and at that time, and since then, they now periodically put out the little digital thing that we all pass, and you know, tells you how fast you're going. But if we do not follow that up with traffic enforcement, and I can just tell you that I watch for this now, every time the little digital reader is out there, I have personally never seen an actual policeman out there handing out tickets to people. I have, however, stood and watched them driving upwards of 45 and 50 miles an hour down through there, because after a while, people become desensitized to it because they know that there's not a policeman waiting to give them a ticket. And I have actually stood there and watched them drive 45 and 50 miles an hour down through there, right past the digital reader. And, you know, I'm just, I'm not sure that we're not going to wait for someone to, you know, get killed, or, you know, have some sort of heinous accident out there because people are speeding, but certainly, something needs to be done. And I appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk to you guys about this because it honestly godly scared me to death the other night. I mean, I really thought that we were going to get run over. So, again, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Kimberly Cole, and I reside at 28 Mockingbird Lane in Georgia. That's the northeast quadrant of the Appalachian Mountains, where in 2002, I opened a clinic, and it has been up and running since without any incident. I would like to take this time to thank you for allowing me the opportunity and your time and consideration, as I feel I understand your concern in and for your community. I only want to speak with you, not convince you or sway you to my side of the fence, but to present factual information to you and hopefully be able to show you the need and just cause for such a facility as mine. Keeping it within the city ordinances, which is not being within 1,000 feet of any churches, schools, daycares, or any business that may say, sell alcohol, while being out of the community's eye, and yet provide confidentiality to and for the patients, can be and should be achieved and remain inside the scope of the zoning commission rules and regulations. A facility such as this is also highly regulated by the state, federal, and pharmacy board agencies. Methadone treatment is cost-effective. It's safe, it helps a community, as it would generate employment. This facility would help patients with job training, placement, GEDs, assistance, and works with other healthcare organizations, churches, and educational systems. Now, I'll try not to bore you with some statistics, but please bear with me. Tennessee is the 17th largest state in the U.S. in terms of population in the southwest region of the nation. But having said all that, Tennessee is second in the nation for prescription addiction, having at one time gone from third to first in the nation. And it has steadily remained in second place. Drugs are shipped in and out of this state with and from the eight neighboring states, being a major contributing factor when it comes to substance abuse in Tennessee. 60% of all violent crimes committed in Tennessee are drug-related, where statistics show in a community with a methadone clinic, the crime rate is drastically reduced. Hence, the myth of bringing the drugs of society to your community is just that, a myth. The state of Tennessee has and does try to generate a lot of support for addicts by having proper care and treatment accessible to patients. The Tennessee Bureau of Investigations has become actively involved as the abuse of prescription-controlled substances in Tennessee becomes a major concern for local, state, and federal agencies. There is so much complexity to this issue, states Dr. Jerry Miller, the founder of the Host and Medical Group. This is why I'm here today, to sincerely ask you for your support in helping me with my clinic in your community, to help people regain their lives, their families, self-respect, and dignity, to obtain a special use permit for a building that it be permitted and used for said purpose of a methadone clinic, so that people receive treatment with compassion and dignity and respect. Who in this room would deny a diabetic insulin or a cancer patient chemotherapy? Well then, why would you deny any person the form of treatment they seek, just because you may not agree or perhaps understand it? Their choice of their form of treatment. In closing, I would like to share with you that I buried my child, and if I can save one, just one parent or one family from that pain, heartache, or anguish, then this endeavor that I am undertaking, undertaking will have been worth it. Drugs don't know, and they don't care. They have no regard for race, gender, economics, anything or anyone. I blame drugs, let me specify, I blame prescription drugs for my daughter's death and erect 18-year marriage, and I'm fighting dog mad. But I believe so much in what I'm doing, that I'm giving it my all. I am with my heart and soul and all I have, which is my total life savings. But I am one person, so I'm imploring you for your help. Therefore, that is why I humbly and respectfully request the special use permit for said purpose of opening a methadone clinic in this area. of opening a methadone clinic in this area. I thank you very much for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to be heard here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Is there anyone else wishes to address the city council this evening?
Hello. My name is Suzanne White. I live at 214 Edgewood Road, which I just recently moved into, but I purchased about a year and a half ago. Since I've been living there, most of you live in that area and kind of know what it looks like, I've been doing a lot of work on the property. I've been having an issue, which has been ongoing for a long time, with wrecks that occur coming off of East Cedar Street into my yard. Well, with the trees that were actually there before, they're not there today, they actually stopped some of the wrecks. It's very dangerous. I have two beautiful granddaughters that play in that wonderful field over there, and I don't want to stop them from doing that. My father, who is here also tonight, lives right beside of me and, you know, we get out there and work in those yards and it's just so dangerous. We're scared we're going to get killed or my grandkids are going to get killed. I have went before and talked to several people about, there is an East Cedar Street project that is actually going on, and I'm just asking that before that actually finishes up, because I know it's already been a year and a half that I've been working on this, someone put up a guardrail for me. I'm just asking that you put the guardrail there for me to protect my family and especially my grandchildren, who I will be worried about forever. And again, as you can tell, it's been cleaned up, it looks beautiful through there, it's kind of bad right now, but it's getting there. And I just ask for your help to help me on this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? Thank you, folks, for coming and participating in your council meeting. With that, we'll move right on then to, next up on our agenda is ordinances and resolutions. I can promise you that every one of the folks that spoke this evening, those matters will be addressed. Our staff will look into each and every one of these things and report back to city council. So you can expect, I think most of you can expect a phone call or some kind of contact from city council. Ordinances and resolution. Mr. Broton, tell us what's up. First reading of new ordinances.
Ordinance, ordinance number 12-1, excuse me, is an ordinance to ban, abandon unimproved course in a sprint drive as a public right-of-way. This item does, just as it's described in its title, it abandons an unimproved section of sprint drive, and it's an area that is located between 115 and 140 Sprint Drive. The area that we're talking about is about 373 feet from the edge of the current improved area roadway, which is the cul-de-sac, and it extends at 60 feet, 60 feet in width. The development pattern, and, I'll bring the next slide up, maybe this will help. The area in black represents the unimproved section of Sprint Drive, if it was extended, heading there towards the top of the screen. Because of the development pattern in that area, to the, to the left of the black right-of-way is where the new Sprint Telecenters project, building will be constructed. But because of the development pattern in that area and because of the rights, because of the easements, utility easements and infrastructure in that area, there is no public purpose necessary to maintain that right-of-way as an area for a future roadway extension. So the planning commission, there's another slide shows it again, the parcels that we're talking about, as well as the area be abandoned. The planning commission at its January 23 meeting reviewed the proposed right-of-way abandonment as they always do, and they recommend to city council that you proceed with the abandonment process. What will actually happen is the parcel of land to the top of that property, that will become, that'll serve as a driveway at some future point if and when that area develops to the, to the north or to the top. And so the need for, again, a public road moving back in that direction is not necessary. And it's recommended that you approve first reading of the ordinances presented.
Thank you, Ms. Broton. Is there, any member of council have questions of staff on this particular issue? Any clarification needed by council? Hearing none, then, I'll ask anyone in attendance who wishes to speak to city council on this particular matter. Is there anyone here who wishes to address council on this particular matter? Hearing none, then, what is the pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
And Margaret, thank you for the second. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion by city council? Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Sandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Auburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Yes.
Moving on then to adoption of ordinances, second reading. Mr. Broton, if you'll tell us about ordinance 11-26.
Ordinance number 11-26 is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain properties as RE, established residential neighborhood. This is the Fairmount North rezoning, that was the subject of the public hearing earlier this evening. Just to summarize again, the rezoning involves an area of about 170 acres and will change the area depicted in yellow from the current R3 multifamily residential district to the RE established residential district, consistent with the city council's policy. Because this was subject of a public hearing earlier this evening, let me remind council that in accordance with your policy, no additional public comment is afforded at this time of the proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Broton. Is there any member of council needs additional clarification or questions of staff?
I'd like either Mr. Broton or Sherri Brown just to briefly let us know what, how we communicate with the neighborhood, because I know for the last year and a half, we've worked really hard on, on communicating. So just, just to summarize for a minute what we've done to try to communicate.
I'd be happy to. During the neighborhood planning process, we used a great variety of techniques to communicate with the neighborhood, from newspaper articles to TV interviews to Facebook, Twitter, direct flyers indoors, we used some of the juvenile volunteers for that, for that project. As a matter of course, though, with items that are rezonings that are coming before planning commission and city council, prior to the planning commission's consideration, a notice is mailed to each affected property owner, and a notice is also mailed to each adjoining property owner. And those notices are mailed to the owner's address, not the renter's address. Those notices go out, again, prior to the planning commission's consideration and prior to council consideration. For public hearings, a notice is also posted in the newspaper. For smaller rezonings, there's a sign on each piece of property involved. For these larger rezonings, such as this and the one we did out on the West End, signs are posted just at key intersections or places where we think we can get the most visibility by posting signs that let folks know planning commission's going to consider it and what the, the meeting date and time. And then there's a special sign for public hearings to let folks know about the hearing tonight. A good example is the one outside this building.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Broton, how many properties that are currently in, well, I guess the whole neighborhood is R3, how many properties within that zoning district, if they are damaged more than 40%, can go back to number of the units that they currently have?
As best as we can determine, there are 16 properties in the area subject to the rezoning that have multifamily, multiple dwelling units on those parcels. Of those 16, the zoning change will not impact 10 of them. Nothing will be different if they're RE or they're R3, they're, nothing changes in terms of 10 of, so there are six properties, again, as best as we can determine, where, if they're not owner occupied and they are damaged to more than 40%, the resulting, the requirements of the code would require that not more than two dwelling units be replaced on that lot. I think we have about 500 lots in this rezoning. So, so think about it this way, we have 500 lots subject to the rezoning, about 16 of them could be affected, in reality, only six would be. And if any of those six are owner occupied, it would reduce the number down to five or four, three, depending on how many actually have one of those dwelling units occupied by the person who owns the lot.
And that's only affected if there's damage to the unit? I mean, as it is?
Yes, the, I was trying to be complete and clear on that. As long as, if there, if a, if a multifamily structure is damaged to less than 40%, it can be replaced.
Repaired, replaced.
Repaired, kept, kept, brought back to its current configuration. If there, if, in the case which we want, is no structure has any damage, well, then that, that structure can remain in place forever. The rezoning change doesn't affect the fact that there may be more dwelling units there than the new code would allow because they're existing.
And if it is owner occupied and is damaged more than 40%, they can build it back to what it was?
If it's, if it's owner occupied, this doesn't affect them.
Okay.
They can, they can, they can maintain.
Out of the six units that you mentioned, how many of the six is owner occupied?
We don't, I, I don't know that I know that number, and I'm not sure if we know that number. But, but I, so I don't know, but again, the, the totality is, is, is small.
Right. And those six units today, under the new codes, if they come and apply for the multi-unit family, would they get approved?
Well, no, I'm not, maybe the questions could be framed differently. Each one of those six, you know, have structures with dwelling units on them, more than two, because the RE zoning allows two, so that's a, that's a break-even point. So any, so of those six structures, we know they have to have more than two, or it wouldn't be meaningful, the zoning change would not affect them. And because they're existing structures, again, they can remain in place forever. It's only if there's significant damage, at which time, then they would have to comply with the zoning requirement of not more than two dwelling units with a rezoning to RE.
Okay. If we left certain sections in R3, how would that differ as far as a 40% burnout to an RE? Would it be the same?
It depends on the lot size.
That, that's what I'm getting at.
Right. The...
So they might not be able to do anything.
And, and that's why, that's why I was describing of the 16 units.
Right.
10 of them, it's meaningless in terms of the zoning because of the lot size. And it's, it's a little, it's not well-understood, but zoning first came to Bristol in 1942. And from 1942 till 2012, that's whatever that is, it's a long time, the R3 district has always had a lot size, and it's been as low as 3,000 square feet, it's been as high as 3,500, and currently it's 3,350 square foot. And what that means is, for every 3,350 square feet of lot size, you can have one dwelling unit, because right now, this is a multifamily dwelling, multifamily district. So a lot of 6,701 feet could have legally two. A lot of 10,051 could legally have three. So, again, the 16 that we can determine becomes 10 because under the current R3 or under the proposed RE, the same situation occurs. You can't have more than two because of the lot size. And that goes back to the 40s. That's nothing that anybody has, none of us, nobody in the audience has had anything to do with that, because it's historically been here for 70-some years.
So, which we're not on discussion, but this is, so the intention of the RE is not to change, I mean, it's not that we can change anything that's already there, it is for future to, to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood and to, to maintain the the single-family duplex nature of the neighborhood. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, you know, the majority of the Fairmount North was built as a single-family neighborhood. Over time, single-family homes have been converted into multifamily structures, which code allows. Going forward in time, though, we, in the planning commission and the neighborhood, when we went through this planning process, all concluded that what's there is fine, but let's not create more multifamily units in that neighborhood. And that's the genesis for this change to RE. Again, you cannot have more than two units per lot going forward. Anything newly constructed cannot exceed two with the zoning change.
Mr. Broton, make sure I understand this correctly. The six properties we're talking about, if they remain under R3 and there is more than 40% damage to the building, they cannot build it back to multi-unit, more than two. Is that correct?
If they...
Due to the lot size.
If they remain R3.
Correct.
If they were to remain R3.
Correct.
If they were to remain R3, they would be allowed to be, is that correct, Jerry?
Depends on lot size.
Exactly. My point is, due to the lot size, they may not be able to rebuild.
Yeah, that's, it depends on the lot size, and, and what's interesting is historically, there's no way to know how, historically, we have way no to ask, no way to ascertain how a home that was a single-family home ended up with six units when the zoning would only allow three, for example. How that ever happened historically, there's no way to know, it just, it's just what exists. So, so to your question, the underlying zoning of R3, if it doesn't change, that 3,350 square feet per dwelling unit standard applies should there be damage.
So some of them are out of compliance as they are?
Currently, yes.
They are, right. And again, so that's just, that's just the existing situation, how, again, we have no way to know if a building permit was ever pulled, we just don't know. Nobody paid attention, we just don't.
It was a long time ago.
It was a long time.
Counsel, as we drift away from clarification into discussion...
That was pretty good clarification.
How about we get a motion on the floor?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
And Margaret, thank you for the second. Now, we have a motion and a second on the floor. How about additional discussion as we move forward?
Well, I mean...
Are we done?
Just the last comment, I'm just concerned about the citizens who have made investments, and this is probably their retirement plan and planning to make income off of that property for a long time, and God forbid, something happens, then their investment goes away. But, as you know, in any investment, there is risk involved. I make investment in businesses and there is risk involved, so our intention is to keep the neighborhood wonderful, protect the history of our neighborhood. We're concerned about the density of the neighborhood, parking, safety...
We're concerned about the density of the neighborhood, parking, safety, and traffic flow.
Thank you, Ben. Any other comments?
Yeah, and I don't, I would say that it's also possible that a bad situation for an owner could be a good situation because it could be made back into two that are nicer and higher rent or, or whatever. So it might not be as, as risky as what's involved. But I think that it maintains the neighborhood and what the neighborhood, through our processes, we understood that there is great interest in maintaining the historic neighborhood. And people are grandfathered in, and hopefully, there's no change for folks who.
One last clarification. If it is owner occupied and is damaged more than 40% and the lot size.
Doesn't matter.
Does not matter. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm pretty clear.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I think Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, that's, we have no resolutions this evening. We have a consent agenda. We usually vote this as a block and do so without discussion. A lot, a lot of times, it's merely housekeeping things, purchasing road salt and that sort of thing. Mr. Broton, if you'll tell us what's on the consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes five items tonight. They include the minutes of the January 3rd council meeting, the minutes of the January 17th, special call council meeting, includes Resolution 12-11 approving the acceptance of grant funds for projects at the Tri-Cities Regional Airport, includes Resolution 12-12 awarding bids for the purchase of traffic control materials, and includes Resolution 12-13, appointing a commissioner to the Tri-Cities Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Broton. Is there any member of council wish to have any of these items pulled to, to discuss? Hearing none, I think Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Wait, I move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second. We got a motion and a second. There we go. Still got to do that, don't we?
It helps.
Sorry, folks. Thank you. Now, Mr. Terry, this time, we really are ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
I'll vote yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our city manager's report. Mr. Broton?
Just want to remind city council and anybody who's listening, we have some board openings that'll be coming up in the next couple of months. We have in March, at our next meeting, opportunity for two appointments to the Bristol, Tennessee Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Also in March, we have one unfilled term with the Community Development Advisory Committee that has opened up, and we will be seeking a candidate for that. And then again, in April, we have actually three additional seats on the Community Development Advisory Committee that'll be up for reappointment. So in the next two months, we have a total of six positions that the city council will be needing to fill. And anybody who's interested in knowing more about those assignments and what it entails and the application process, we'll be happy to answer any telephone calls or walk-ins or electronically, it can be done on our website. So those three boards, sorry, those two boards will be approaching, will be appearing on your next couple agendas for consideration. I might just mention, unless somebody else wants the honor of mentioning the groundbreaking we had today. Did you want to take that?
Go right ahead.
Well, we had a groundbreaking today for the Phase 1 of the Beaver Creek Flood Reduction Project downtown. This is a project that's long in the making, dates back about 10 years when City Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia got together and identified a need to work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, figure out a way to reduce flooding downtown. And today, we had the ribbon, the groundbreaking ceremony to launch the first phase of that project, which is the Sears site, which will open up the creek, daylight the creek, do some bank stabilization, improve the parking lot, have a linear greenway and walkway, and a performing arts area. We'll all be a part of this Phase 1 plan. So it was good news. Thank you for all attending the event today. Good news, the contractor has had a great start with weather, and presuming weather remains reasonable, we should be able to have a ribbon cutting ceremony of the improvement probably in June this summer. So the Corps will be actively, and we will, as we're, will, are actively working to secure the remaining federal appropriations to continue the project and complete the remaining phases. And now that we actually have moved forward with the first phase, all of a sudden, our project is high on the totem pole for future funding, and they want to get the project done because they've started it. So, good news. Thanks for everybody attending.
I did have a question. They mentioned today that there's going to be a slope on the bank and some rip wrap that they're going to put, is that rocks on the side? That's not going to be gabion baskets?
No. It'll be.
Excellent.
So anyway, the contractors actively working, and anybody who wants to see for the first time in a long time what the creek looks like under the old Sears building, go take a look, and it's a great project, glad it's happening. And that's all tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Broton. Who else on the city council has, has a few comments? Margaret, I'm sure you.
Well, I wanted to just piggyback on that and just add that it was very, very nice to see Jerry Goodpastor and Ann Gellinwater there today, and recognized for what they did, and John Gellinwater too, with the Beaver Creek Walk that was in, came out of Ignite, started before Ignite, and then was part of that process in 97, 98. And a lot of this stuff, I think you gave credit, that a lot of the things downtown, Border Bash, The Journey's End, some of those things.
Margaret.
Came directly from Ann and Jerry for their ideas and things they've seen in other communities and wanted to see happen here. So Beaver Creek Walk isn't quite here yet, and it's not quite the vision that they first painted, but we would not be where we are today with that project had it not been for their vision and their dreams. And it was very nice to see both of them there and recognized. So, thank you for, for doing that. Thank our staff for setting it up, and thanks for a healthy reception. So gorgeous fruit and light cookies. So it was a good thing to, to have. I'm not done. Want me to keep going?
You just might as well roll with it, Margaret. I know you're not done.
And don't forget Gary. Anyway, the library, the Discovery Series is having a press conference tomorrow to unveil the new series. So I know they'll have some exciting things. We're fortunate to have that series in our community, also fortunate to have the King Colleges Beekner Institute lecture series as well. And I think that's mostly what I wanted to say. Other than Family Promise of Bristol, that's helping to, that helps families with children, we're progressing and can take any contributions anybody wants to give to help stabilize our program, to be able to open in a couple months, and appreciate churches that have come on board, and hopefully, some other congregations will come on board as well.
Thank you, Margaret. Dr. Lilly, I know Margaret wouldn't sleep well tonight if I don't ask. Do you have anything that you'd like to tell us about our school system at this meeting?
We'd be so disappointed.
Got a few things that I can throw you in on. Marilyn Matthews is the executive director of the Association for Independent Municipal Schools, and she asked me to extend her appreciation to Mr. Broton and to Mayor Shoemaker for taking some questions and spending some time with the mayor and alderman from Bartlett, Tennessee, which is contemplating starting their own city school system. And even though they are in West Tennessee, if they are successful, then certainly, the more city systems that are in the state, the more support there is for all city systems and a stronger voice. So thank you for doing that. I think it was time well spent. I think the council will be pleased to know that, once again, this year, we are offering tutoring, ACT tutoring for our 11th graders. We've got teachers working evenings and in some cases, on the weekends, to provide that tutoring. In support of the city's Economic Development Strategic Plan and the School Systems Strategic Plan, we have also opened it this year to 12th graders. So seniors have the opportunity to take the ACT again. It's required for all 11th graders throughout the state. But for those seniors who would like another shot at it and hopefully to perform better, then we are providing tutoring to help them with that. And we're also trying to build awareness. We want students and parents to know that quite a few opportunities come with high ACT scores. Sullivan County offers the Educate and Grow Scholarship. The state of Tennessee offers the Hope Scholarship, which of course, is funded through lottery. And of course, many colleges and universities offer their own scholarships for students who do very well on the ACT. So it's extremely important, and we're doing what we can to support that, and we think that our students are doing well with it. Another teacher from Tennessee High that deserves some kudos, we are proud of Avandro Valente, who is a finalist. He's reached a finalist, the finalist stage for the McLaughlin Award for Teaching Excellence, which is a regional award, which includes Tennessee, Virginia, and Kentucky. So it's a pretty big deal. He's one of three finalists. And even though the winner will not be announced until April at Radford University, we're very proud of him for, for making it to this level and feel like he's got a pretty good shot at, at winning it. But all of our teachers are working very hard, and we're proud of them all, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lilly. Appreciate all you do. Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Well, we started a new radio show called Farmer to, Farm to Table, and is every Monday at 1:30 live on 90.7 FM. And we interview farmers, and we try to promote and create consciousness for a healthier community and poison-free, good, organic, wholesome food. And at one of our meetings with Appalachian Sustainable Development, we talked about potentially bringing it to downtown Bristol and close the downtown and have farmers from all over the region come and assign every farmer to a chef. They can bring their product, and the chef can bring it to edible status, and then invite the public and support the farmers and create conscious, awareness for that process. So we're hoping that we work with both cities to get that done this year. And our Appalachian Antique Car Club of America decided to do their heart August night on August 10th. So hopefully, we'll work with both cities to get that show back on State Street. And I know we got a request from Paramount, and hopefully, we can talk about our budget for 2012 to include them in our budget, but that, that's for later. But I want to make sure we talk about that. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Joe, what you got?
I don't have anything, Doug.
Uh-oh. He got some organic eggs.
I'll just, one little thing. It was, it was a wonderful little article in the, in the paper the other week about one of our own, Ms. Sherri Brown. And Margaret, I believe there was, there was a great little article about you a little while back.
That's ancient history now.
Well, it's still.
It was a long time ago.
You know, it's still, it's still nice when, when folks like Sherri and Margaret, who do good things all the time, work hard for the community, it's nice when they get recognized and appreciate, appreciate seeing that article and you getting some of the recognition you deserve, Ms. Sherri, and as, no matter how long ago it was, Margaret, it's still a good article.
Thanks. Roger Brown does a great job. Where is he?
Where is our paper? That, that means that this council meeting didn't even happen.
While we're, while we're talking about people being recognized, I was a little amiss because I had not read my Tennessee Municipal League Bulletin and got an email version from Beulah Ferguson at First Tennessee Development District. And our Tennessee Municipal League does a, what, every other week newsletter, little newspaper. And here's Bristol on the front page of it, and down in the middle, there's a big picture of Mr. Broton with great things talked about with what's going on in Bristol with our downtown and our strategic plan. And it was quite lengthy article, three color pictures, I think, total, and really very, very complimentary in the highlightness across the state with other cities. So our strategic planning process has gotten a lot of good feedback and a lot of good press, so thank you. And Sherri, that's you too. Your picture wasn't in it, but you get, it's the work behind that gives the big guy the credit, right?
And Mike.
And Mike, very much too, teamwork here with our whole team. So anyway, pretty good. Thank you.
All right. With that said, folks, have a great evening. Appreciate everybody coming and participating in your council meeting tonight, and it was nice. We had more than usual folks on a shorter evening. This is, this has been great. Have a great evening, be safe going home, see you back next month. We are adjourned.